Okay, thank you. We're here on Tuesday, November 19th. We'll bring the meeting to order. We are in a joint discussion with the town board on Chappaqua Crossing. And we're right on Chappaqua time here. Seven forty start at eight twenty-five. So here we are. What I'd like to do is just take those two extensions that we have first, just as a courtesy to any of those folks who might be here, and then we'll have our discussion with regard to the Chappaqua Crossing. So our first one, our first extension request is for Citron. And this is a request for an extension to finalize and submit the preliminary resubdivision plan, final resubdivision plan, integrated plot plan, stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals at 123 and 127 Westwood Drive. I don't think there are any issues, right, from the staff?
No.
No issues from legal? Jennifer's not here. She thought it was so easy, she didn't bother coming tonight.
She does not have any issues.
I know she doesn't. I'm only kidding. We actually did talk to her. So is there a motion to grant the extension as requested?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the next one is the Chappaqua Central School District has requested an extension to submit the final subdivision plan proof of the New York City DEP approval of the SWIP, Button Hook Road, and Sabina Road. Again, Bob, I think it's on target, right? No issues?
I don't have any issues with the extension.
Okay. And now seeing any other issues, is there a motion to grant the extension as requested?
Oh.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Kristen Motel from Petty Invader for Chappaqua Central School District. I just have one minor adjustment. The agenda reflects the extension to February 4th, 2020.
We changed that based on council's request. We changed it to the March 6th, 2020, instead of the February. It's a mathematical error, my problem.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Sorry to keep you for that. In any event, with that correction, is there a motion to adopt the extension requested by the applicant? Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We move now to our continued discussion. This is the referral from the town board, the petition of SGH Chappaqua, A.B., L.C., whatever the names our officials are. So we've had a discussion with the town board. We're at the point where we're getting close to putting together our referral memo to the town board on the issues that they've asked us to, that they've referred to us. And we've beaten a lot of those subjects up in that discussion. So I'll take comments from board members, and also we'll take a few comments from the public. If there are any members of the public here, we'd like to mention any thoughts or issues, concerns. So I think the issue is, why don't we talk about the, are you folks here interested in Cowden Lane?
Yes.
Do you want to speak to that issue? Are you the ones who wrote the letter?
First thing out of the chute.
Well, we've had an hour at the chute, so, an hour and a half at the chute. So if you like.
Sure.
If you don't, that's fine. We can warm up a little bit.
Sure. So Don Leitch, my wife Nan Leitch, we own 37 Cowden Lane, and we sent you guys a letter, both boards, a letter with some recommendations on the buildings near our property. Our property is the most contiguous to the development. And I think the first request we would make is that potentially the developer come out to our property and take the photos with the superimposed buildings, much like they did on the rest of Cowden Lane. And so I think that would be our first request, to really see how much these condo developments are looking over our property. As we suggested in the letter, we really are sunk. The topography really slopes downwards. We are kind of in a hole from the property itself, and the development really is kind of up on the ridge. And so we're just a little concerned that the one building, Building U? I forget off the top of my head. I think it was Building U, at the corner of our property, really is going to tower over our backyard. And so the early recommendation that we had made was, is there a possibility to either take the height down in that building, or potentially move the building to behind our property? I think behind our property, which is Building Sabina, I'm sorry, I don't have the map.
I don't know what the top.
I think it's Building Double E, I want to say.
It's the...
Northernmost, right?
Yes, northernmost unit set.
So I think that the units behind our property are more level with the back of the property. And I don't, while I think we will certainly see them from the back of our house, I think the topography is a little bit better, that if we were to move a couple of units around, it might be best to put that extra unit over in that far corner, farther to the north, and potentially spare the towering one that sits at Unit U. And again, I may have the building numbers incorrectly. But, so that was our early observation. The second observation is, it's not clear what the planting plan is in front of that northernmost buildings, and so we'd like to try to understand what the plan is to kind of shield the development from our property. But I think most often, and you have it in front of you, Mr. Kirkwood, what I think we'd like to have is potentially the same photographs you have there of Cowden Lane, where you superimpose the buildings, have them come out to our property. We'll make it available at any time. And really look at, do those same photographs with the superimposed buildings, particularly at that Building U corner.
Right, right. And I don't think we have that from the applicant, because there was a change, and we don't have this, right? So I'm looking at the ones that we do have, and we've had these for a couple of years, and we've been looking at this, and we've been working with the vegetation and the berm and how to disguise and hide these as much as possible. But there was a little bit of a change recently, where some of these buildings were pushed a little bit further down to the north to make way for the Chappaqua. And I don't think we have those renderings. So it would be useful to have those renderings at a minimum, it seems to me.
Just for clarification, I think you may have, I want to just double check if you got the buildings right. So was the Building U, is that the one that moved about 10 feet?
Yes.
And is Building Double E, the units we took away from the Performing Arts Center?
Right.
Okay.
And U has been here from the get-go, and that just shifted a little bit as we were moving stuff.
Correct. Yes. So I think there's a shift, and then two more units? Is that what it is, Tom?
Well, no, I think three more units became on Triple, Double E.
And these just shifted.
I see.
Yeah. And they got bigger.
Well, everything got a little bigger, yeah.
And part of it was a shift, but part of it was bigger, but it's about a 10-foot difference. So there should be, as a consequence, really no change to the grading plan, I think, out of that. There should be no revision to the proposed landscaping of the berm out of that. Whether those things are sufficient for your concerns, I'm not here to say, because I haven't looked at it in that regard yet.
Right.
But I don't think that the change in the plan is causing a change in the location of the buildings, or size of the buildings, causing a change in the plan.
Right. Okay.
I have a thought. I mean, it's, you mentioned the planting program, which I think could be modified. And in some cases, we've had screening on the neighbor's property, or into it even. And the taller the tree, then the angle is such that the visibility gets lost, particularly if they're evergreens.
Right.
So I think that this is something that we should have Dennis Corelli work on.
Well, again, if I may. Behind Building Double E, I think that there's enough plantings that you can put in there that is going to be fine. My concern, again, is the topography by Building U. Because it's so steep.
Yep.
You can put as many trees as you want in there, but it's going to take 20 years for them to truly be able to cover something.
Well, that's, partially, that's an issue with all planting programs, that it takes time. 20 years might depend on the size of the tree that's put in it to begin with, and how fast they grow. And so trying to see, you know, if there is a kind of vegetative approach to it, you know, where your site, they can't look in your bedroom, or whatever.
Exactly.
Type of thing. So that's what that's for. Appreciate if, you know, we can get the applicant to do it. Everybody is asked, I guess.
Yeah, and looking at this, I may be looking at the wrong sketch, but with the help of Tom, he's pointing me in the right direction here. It seems to me that the berm that is being created and reworked is to the south of where your property is. So that's really not being disturbed. The real issue is that the building on the top there, Building U, is, I don't think it's any higher than it was ever, right? It was always a 35-foot peak, right, which is our code. So it's 10 feet further, but actually the berm in that area does not look like it's being reconfigured or reconstructed. So to the east, north, excuse me, to the north of the berm, which is, you know, the berm that's being reconstructed is smack middle due east of Building U. So we're not, the applicant's actually not disturbing that hill at all. It's that we will see this, the building on top. And I think the roadway extends and ends at that corner, at Building U.
I bet there's no building there now.
No, I understand, I understand. So, but the issue in terms of the steep slope, we're not making any steeper. It is what it is, and it exists that way.
And we weren't suggesting that.
Our biggest concern is because of the slope.
Right.
Because we are kind of sitting below the slope, if you put Building U on top of the hill, it will be quite high above our property, looking straight down into it.
Yeah, I think the nature, and you don't have a visual to share, but I think the nature of the topography here is that it sits on the corner of the escarpment.
Exactly.
And so from one angle, there is enough of a berm that you
Correct.
Wouldn't see the building, but right at the corner of this escarpment.
Exactly.
It'll be sort of sitting out there.
Exactly right.
So I'm looking at, and I guess the first question is, there indication of, there's indication of trees here on this drawing. Are these trees to be, are they trees, and are they trees to be removed?
I think we're looking at Figure 6-4.
Right. There's this little key plan down here in the left-hand corner.
Do you need those dotted circles?
Yeah. Are those existing trees to be removed? Are those?
Existing trees to remain.
To remain. So it would be interesting to see, you know, what those are, and the extent to which they maybe already do some of what you're concerned about, screen your property from.
Right.
Because they look to be pretty big trees.
No, there are in that corner. We do have, you know, a fair amount of tall trees.
Right.
You know, during the summer, it tends to be obviously substantially better than it does during the winter.
Right.
That was a bit of a concern, that they would also take down trees in that corner. If the trees are staying, that certainly could help.
Will the area, the platform in which Building U will be built, will that be one of the areas that you're taking down? We heard about that during our conversation before, where you're leveling some areas down three to four feet. Will that area over this escarpment be coming down? Or is that basically going to sit on the land as it is at this point? Because that could be a mitigation, if it's actually going to be taken down in that area to...
It'll just be a temporary lowering of the grade around the building, around that building U.
Okay.
So it'll be three feet lower than finished grade, for however long we take to building U.
But the peak of building then is going to be the same as?
Right, there's going to be no net effect to the final product.
Your line of sight, you probably wouldn't even see that grade change from down below it there.
Right.
No.
Okay. Okay, I think you have another issue?
No, no, that's all.
Okay.
So before we leave this, are you going to request that the applicant submit visuals and be as specific as possible as to what you want him to submit?
Yep.
And involve our environmental experts to see if, what he thinks, get an opinion from him on what is proffered.
Right. And, Tom, do you have that, the sketch that actually shows their building as it exists now? I can't find that one. Oh, that one right there. So I guess what we would want to see is visuals from your home directly west to Building EE, which is now going in.
Back them up?
Yes. Sure.
I think U.
Really is, it's this angle here, back here.
Yep.
Is, I'm okay with it.
It's this.
We can live with this. It's this angle here that truly is concerning to us.
And what's the distance here, between here and here?
This is, the scale here is...
Scale's 120.
This is 150 feet.
Some is 150.
An inch? It's 150 feet. So it's about 300 feet?
Okay.
Maybe 250.
250 off the property line?
No, off the building corner.
Off the corner.
The center of the house, the corner.
To my house.
Maybe 300 feet.
I see.
And that's what I'm guessing here.
Yeah, I did a quick little scale. It's about 280 feet from the corner of your house to the corner of the building.
Right. But, yeah, this is really the view that is most concerning.
Right, I completely understand.
And unfortunately, our bedroom sits right here. So to your point about people looking into my bedroom.
So it's a southwestern view from your home?
Yes.
From, say, the driveway, the turnabout, as well as, what is that, the porch or something?
That's right.
So perhaps if you give permission to the applicant to come on board and on your property, take those pictures? Those are the ones that you are most interested in?
That's right.
And due west is okay? I mean, we could have those anyway.
Well, it would be great to have them. As I said, I think we can put a lot more planting in here between the two properties, and I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
But it would be great to have that as well.
Sure. So...
Have a look at it.
Thank you.
Did you understand that, what we're lettering up here?
No, I think you got it.
I was asking the applicant, not the lawyers.
Chairman, I think you should reiterate the request, so the applicant can
Right.
Focus on it and submit.
Yep. So I think it's renderings from their home, their back porch, due west toward Building EE, and then to the southwest, to the corner of Building U.
Can we donate a drawing from one of the books here with the line, you know, to give them a line of sight that was just drawn in?
Sure, I guess. I mean, I think that has...
I think they can figure it out.
Okay. Any other concerns, issues?
Will they also take a photo?
You have to come forward if you want to ask a question.
Consider it aerobic, it's okay. Sorry.
I wasn't sure as you were talking, will they also take a photo of the view to BB, Unit BB?
BB.
Yes.
And for the record, would you introduce your...
Nan Leitch.
Thank you.
Where's BB?
I thought it was GB.
Is that BB?
Yes, that one.
EE or BB?
Across on the other side of the road?
Yes, yes. So from our yard.
To that corner?
Yes. We're more on level ground here. Here we're down below, but we are on level ground. So would they also take that way and this direction?
Sure.
Yeah.
But this is your home, right?
Yes, yes. That is part of our, that is part of our home building, is the carriage house.
So you want to pension it to BB from the carriage house?
Yes, here, going in that direction, if that's possible.
Okay, is that how it came out?
Did you get that?
From the carriage house to Building BB?
The second structure.
So there are essentially three views.
EE, BB.
And if you are there?
Oh, yes.
When they show up, you can sort of help them by directing.
Absolutely, I'll make myself available.
Okay. Do you have their contact information?
I'm writing it down right now.
We may already have the photos, because we did this years ago. If you recall, when you were in your house, you let us in. We walked in together, I was one of them, absolutely. So Matt will check what we have in our files to see what views we've taken from their house at that point, and we'll see what comes up.
Great.
We need to get touchy, and we will.
Good.
Great, thank you.
You just finished remodeling. This is a long time ago.
Okay, that's why I have no memory.
Yeah.
It seemed like yesterday. We could see the dinosaur tracks.
They need to remodel again.
That's it, we'll let you know.
Okay, great.
Bob, could we turn to the specifics that you're going to be looking for on the construction phasing?
Yeah.
Good point, yep.
I think that would be, that would be helpful, and, yes. It's just, the first principle here, the first concern, is that we look at drawings like this, and it's actually, if you just look at a drawing like this, it doesn't look any bigger than anything else we approve, because all the drawings we look at are like this. So it's a very big site, and it's a very, very big construction project. It's also relatively dense. It's not that we mind that, actually, I think we generally prefer that. But it's also something that's going to take a long time to build out, and we're not exactly sure how long. And no disparaging your company, but you're subject to the marketplace to do these things for profit. You're actually in the selling business, right? So we're not exactly certain that this is actually going to end up getting built at the very end. It all depends, right? So the notion that, as I understand, the way you plan on constructing this is you improve the site first, meaning infrastructure, which prepares the site for the sale of building pads and buildings. On such a big site for such a long period of time, and I think I explained it in there, there is a natural concern of what's it going to look like, and how long is it going to look that way. So you might also think about maybe, instead of preparing the whole site, improving the whole site, and improving it to the point where you actually have created these building pads, and it's not a house pad, it's actually a, it's either a triple or a quadruple, right, pad for those townhomes. It's a big, it's a big depression. Doing that all at once, maybe we ought to think about phasing that part of the construction as well. And that gives, I think, the town protection that, you know, geez, if it takes 15 years to do this, we're not sitting with this site in a half-built condition. And we feel a little bit more certain that if the market, and we had a housing crisis not long ago, and who knows, right, what's going to happen, when that might happen again, we'd have a little bit of protection to be, to be, feel better, more safer, that actually if the market turns, that the site is not going to be maintained in this, or left in this condition for an indefinite period of time. So in that phasing of it, section at a time, you guys decide what's prudent in terms of your market takedown. It would be a series of plans that show what are the improvements for roadways and infrastructure? What are the improvements for drainage, right? What are the improvements for soil stabilization? What are the improvements for just simple beautification? I'm sure that you guys don't want to be selling homes in a construction site. I know for your business, you have to do that. But it seems to me that maybe we ought to be doing this in smaller chunks, actually doing the site improvements in the chunks of investment that you guys will be making. And I don't know whether that's three phases, or five phases, or two phases, but I think that that would be prudent for us to take a look at, and have the metrics not only of what it's going to look like, but where's the soil going to be stockpiled? I mean, say, we're going to come back and put the soil back around the pads. Okay, where is all that dirt? Right? And how do you protect that dirt from erosion? Right? How do you protect that dirt from being unsightly conditioned? And I'm still concerned about, I really am concerned, because about the sheer size of the soil excavation you'll be doing long-term, because I think you said that the first three feet or four feet is soil that you will stockpile and then use to do finished grading, right? There's another six feet in those basements. And six feet, thousand square feet times 90, that's 60,000 square feet, do the math again, it's 540,000 cubic feet of earth, which is 20,000 yards of material. I did the math the other day, and I think I ended up with a tower of dirt that was 80 feet by 80 feet by 80 feet high. That's how much dirt we're talking about. So we need to understand that better, and being able to manage it better from the town's point of view, so that as, I think Bob mentioned to me during the break, there are construction sites that are slow in being built out, and that are still in the construction phase. And he gets phone calls from people, gee, you know, the drainage is coming, this is unsightly. That's not the business we want to be in, is answering those phone calls. So maybe working with Bob, he can begin to help us all figure out what might be inappropriate from an engineering point of view, and things we worry about.
Yeah, maybe the five-acre thing you mentioned.
Let me ask you a question, just to put this in perspective. Does anyone do the mathematics to see the total area of disturbance for the total East Village for construction? Does anyone know?
It's 20 acres.
20 acres.
Well, it's 21.8, right?
Is that the total limits of disturbance?
21.8.
21.8.
So keep in mind, you're going to be restrained by no more than five acres.
That's right. We have to prove that out as part of our DEP permit. You have to demonstrate a phasing plan to be able to operate in five acres.
Right. So wouldn't that, to Tom's point, wouldn't that fall naturally in terms of this phasing that we're speaking about? Thank you, Sabrina. Yes.
But that would dictate the phasing that you will be trying to accomplish.
That's correct.
But keep in mind, we've had a few instances on the other side with the retail, and I don't want to say too much, but there's a real problem that, me as an ASMO guy, I get hammered on by DEP when things happen. I don't want to go through that, Thomas.
None of us want to go through it, yeah.
So what are...
We know DEP is strict, and we know they'll be out there watching.
Yes, they will.
Nobody wants an erosion problem.
Well, what are the rules on this, Bob, in terms of, we understand that there's a five-acre rule. So we have 21.8 acres, so it just naturally starts, you start to think in terms of four phases, if not more, with the remainder.
That'd be five.
Five, exactly.
I would say five.
But what is even the timing on that? So they cleared approval on it. What is the timing in terms of how long, to Tom's point, that we can have under that permit, stockpiled soil? Do they come out? Is there a clock on that, where you have to get it?
Before they go from one phase to another, the DEP is very much of a stickler on everything that has to be stabilized. During each phase, you can only have the soil stockpiled be unstabilized for so many days or weeks.
Seven days.
Seven days. And believe you me, they will be out there all the time. And if things aren't going right, take them after the town as well, possibly. So we have to make certain we have a really rock-solid sequencing plan on this particular project.
So to Tom's point, I think, you know, not just the construction phasing, but just the, from the very get-go, the infrastructure, the roadways, what we're doing, we really need those kinds of details. And they've got to be realistic to make sure.
There is a phasing plan that was developed on a preliminary basis for the DEP, the Speedy's permit. So that was provided. It was preliminary.
Right.
And we were sort of trying to fix the site plan, but it did outline the different phases of construction. There were five phases. And it did identify the roads, and in what order they were going to be constructed, and the infrastructure that went along with the roadways. The cut to fill, the overall cut to fill was used as the basis for developing those phases, where you had half of the five acres that was cut, half of the five acres that was fill, and then there would be interim stabilization, utility infrastructure would be installed, roads would be paved, and then you would move on to the next phase. So, that, that was put together, I think, where we got into a conversation at our last meeting, we started to talk about basement excavation and how that works. And it's, it's a valid point.
It's more that we have the BERM and all, all these things.
That's right. So, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna provide the interim grading, so you can see how we're gonna leave these pads. We're gonna provide the phasing, we're gonna provide the cut to fill in an illustration where you guys can understand where the cut is, where the fill is, and how pads are gonna be left, and what condition, and how that works. The intent is not to stockpile 20,000 yards. It's not gonna give us a lot.
When will, when will you see that?
We're going to work on it. I know that's additional information you've recently asked for. We did start to put that together, and our expectation is to have it at the next meeting.
And how will the cut to fill go from phase to phase? That's the tricky part. You could have a cut to fill for the whole project, that's easy. The tough part is phase to phase, cut to fill.
Yeah, what I just explained is, we did put that preliminary phasing plan together for the DEP. Cut to fill was the basis for the plan.
The, the, I just had this image in my mind, and last time I went through the site, I was so focused on the speed bumps, I forgot everything else, but.
It was the plan, Tom.
It's a nice diversion.
You owe me a couple of bowlers. So, the, the stockpile of dirt that came out of the retail portion of the project, which is sitting, I don't know how, I don't know how much of that is left, but it's sitting on the presidential site. I mean, that's the kinda thing we don't wanna have sitting there for like 10 years.
That was a big sticking point with DEP, but finally, through many iterations and meetings, going out there and meeting with CNBI, they did, I believe, finally remove all of that, with the exception of some, which I believe, according to our guy, is gonna be used to fill in the roadway.
That's incorrect, it's all done.
It's all done? Okay, that's good.
I think that was the intent, to remove it off-site, not to, not to shift it to the East Village.
I have a question.
In terms of stockpiles, the only, the only thing we were planning to stockpile is topsoil for reuse.
But still, you're gonna have to go through the mechanisms that Bob has laid out.
No, I understand, but you've got another six feet, which isn't topsoil.
I have another question.
One of the details we're gonna show you. And I understand your question, that's a good, that's a good question.
I have another question. The development is go, is gonna go from, in your mind right now, from south to north?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Each phase is gonna take two years? Three? One?
No. The intent was, and we will consider your comment in doing this in smaller bites, but the original intent was to move through the phasing plan continuously, in terms of infrastructure, roadways, mass grading. Put all the infrastructure in, stormwater's operational, water and sewer is operational, and as we sell homes, we will construct the buildings. And we will do that in a logical order, but the original intent was to do the improvements at once.
I have a follow-up, excuse me. So, you don't have a timeframe for the complete development?
For the last home being constructed? No, it's subject to the market.
You have a minimum timeframe that it's gonna be?
How quickly, like, how quickly could we do it? About 90, you know, people walked in our door the first day and said, you want a house?
You're in business.
We probably make the first 20 deals and shut the lights off and say, we'll see.
We'll see in a couple months.
There is, there is a limitation to how quickly we can build.
Well, okay, since, I can appreciate you not willing to put a number out there, but I'm interested in it, because if it's gonna take eight years, then trees could be planted sooner, and I'm thinking small for the lights. You know, if the trees were planted early, then by the time you build up to that point, the trees would be higher than.
Well, for landscaping, those kinda things, entrances, are things we would look to do upfront, because they're marketing.
Can you guys tree farm onsite? Or do you, does it not help the trees planting?
We usually don't, I mean, we usually plan per the, per the landscape plan.
When will you be submitting the detailed sequencing plan?
I believe the information was submitted previously. We're gonna supplement it to answer the questions that were raised, but there was a phasing plan submitted.
Well, I, I think what you're hearing from us is that whatever was submitted way back when, needs to be detailed in, in phases. And from my perspective, and Greg and Tom know this, and Bob know this better than I, of course, but it seems to me that we really need a lot of good, solid detail, in terms of really when the plants are going, utilities, all this kinda stuff. We really need to understand this, and I'm concerned that, you know, that we are setting up the town potentially for a situation where we have problems with the DEP. That is just something that, you know, you guys won't have troubles with them, fine, but we don't wanna have troubles with them, and that's, that's really, really important. So, all these kinds of things, you can tell us about it, we stabilize this sort of thing. I think we're gonna be looking over the shoulders of Bob and making sure that DEP's not, you know, tracking down on us as well, and making sure that we have belts and suspenders in the event there's a delay, in the event there's a problem, in the event there's a giant storm. What do we do when we have a 500-year storm, and, you know, all the things that we have planned for 100-year storm don't work, and what, what's, you know, what are we gonna do? So, I think those are the kinds of things that we should hear as well, in terms of contingencies, what ifs, if we have a problem. Because we're gonna, I think we're gonna, we may need that. Over the course of a five-year, four-year, three-year, eight-year program, we could very well have a series of these large storms, and we have a problem. It looks great in a 50-year, 100-year storm, but we're sitting here with a complete washout with a bigger storm.
I think we should develop some sort of maintenance bonds to gear towards that specific goal.
Yeah, there are bonds in place, just in case. There will be, we'll have an inspector, a weekly inspection. I'm a retired consultant, I know the town will have their inspector, the DEP will have their inspector, there'll be meetings, coordinations.
I think those kinds of things should be in there, in the plan.
Yeah, I agree. And just for, for clarification, if you're referring to phasing plans that are in this supplemental environmental document, what alerted me, or alarmed me, is that the phasing that you have in here is phasing to improve the site. And then, the very last phase is the construction of 80 units, which could take eight to 10 years. That can't be a, we can't treat that as a single-phase construction project, because it's gonna have to happen in sections anyway. So, that's what alerted me to this. And you, and you also said, I think in the document, that the cut and fill was balanced, I think, at the point of finishing the infrastructure, including fixing up the, the.
Loop road.
Loop road. And so, I thought, okay, we're, now we're balanced, now we're coming back and building like 90 basements. Where is all that dirt going? So, you understand what I'm talking about?
I understand what you're asking.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Greg, did you have a point?
No.
We interrupted you before?
No, we're good.
So, Tom, just staying on the deliverables part, you've got two. Now, the third one, I think the applicant mentioned that they have an updated plan for the guest house, so that should also be submitted. Because I, I know they're gonna, they wanna know.
What was the first one?
The first one was the visuals.
Oh, yes.
The visuals for the neighbors.
Leave it for that. Okay, so the guest house.
The visuals, the detailed sequence.
Yep.
Now, is there anything else, Sabrina, that we need from them?
I still have my stormwater, which hasn't been addressed.
Well, don't we, don't we participate and also give some sort of guidance to the town board in connection with the analysis along with staff, when we get the final analysis on environmental impacts?
Right.
For the changes?
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, at least, we're basically working off a referral request at this point, not getting the final details. Now, to the extent that the changes have stormwater impacts, they're relevant now. Changes that they've asked, not the whole project. If we're focusing only on the rezoning petition and the changes they requested, we're focusing on the environmental analysis of those changes. We're gonna get to the other stuff.
If there's gonna be additional imprevises.
Yeah, I mean, so that's what I'm saying, if there are environmental impacts relevant to the changes they're requesting, that's gotta be documented now.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, in my November 13th memo to the town board, I had requested several items, you know, a site, a site plan for the town board. The planning board has been discussing the site plan, and, you know, we continue to discuss that site plan. A formal site plan in enough detail needs to be submitted to the town board. The environmental analysis should be updated when, when you're talking about the change in the boundary line regarding the Kupla building, of the, how the parking layout will work, so that we can ensure that the, the parking that was so, so painstakingly allocated remains and is laid out accordingly. And I can go through each item in my memo, you know, I think the applicant has received it, and the board needs a response to that. And it's not just the town board, but I think it's helpful for the planning board to get that information as well, because I think that the town board is really looking to the planning board to provide them guidance before they make a decision.
They should have the same.
Correct. And let me ask a question as far as timing. Is this information that's being requested, is it possible to get it in enough time to digest before December 3rd?
Our next meeting's December 3rd.
Your, your next meeting is December 3rd. The town board is opening the public hearing next week, and, you know, it would be an assumption that they were gonna continue that, but kinda, what's your timing sense?
So, we are, we're working on, Matt Steiner, Digne Tungshwabi, we're working on a plan to submit to the, to the town board now. The town board originally approved a PDCP plan, which was a, at that time, a conceptual plan. It did not have as much detail as the, as the detailed site plan has. So, what we're doing is recreating that plan set for the town board, which essentially gives them the proposed layout, but in the format that they originally saw and approved in December 2015, and May before that. So, they'll have the plan, the general layout, they'll have the grading, the drainage, the landscape plan shown to them at the level that they need to approve it at, before we come back to you with the, to update the detailed site plan drawings that you are currently looking at. So, it'll be, it'll reflect the same layout, it'll reflect the same plan that you are looking at with a different set of details, because obviously your charge is much more detailed than what they are being asked to review.
So, when do you expect you'll have that available to staff, town board, and I guess even us?
Yeah, so we're working on that one, and we're gonna try to get that in. We can do it by next week, I think, so.
So, what, what's that mean in terms of days? Next week is, well, so we have Thanksgiving coming, and so we start losing days quickly now.
So, I, I can tell you that both Bob and I are out of the office next week, so we won't even begin to look at it until after the holiday.
Plus two, we have another vacation coming up the end of December, two weeks, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, just being completely honest.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm trying to get some sort of, I think Les is after that, too.
Yeah, I mean, and I, and.
Feeling as to when we're gonna have.
So, the assumption, if you get something in next week, we won't even begin to have eyes on until after Thanksgiving, and then it's a matter of, you know, will we, will we have enough time by December 3rd to present to this board? Probably not.
About one day.
One day?
Yeah.
One day?
I don't think so. And then, but that also comes back to our situation in terms of our, we're currently, we're supposed to get back on, what, the 25th of?
The 25th.
The 25th.
We've talked about December 3rd, but.
Even that may not. Right. So, that's, that's the, the issue here. So, just trying to lay the groundwork, so we understand what the timing might be, what we can expect, and that we can reasonably work around and work with you. And again, I think, you know, to the extent that we get copies of this and can also meet on this, and, and, and help guide the town board on some of these issues.
So, if I, if I may, if I may, just kinda get a, a general sense of the board regarding the nine issues. I think that, that the, let me find my chart, it's probably not in this memo. Going through those nine issues, I think the only one that really hasn't been fleshed, because you don't have enough information to really talk about it, is the phasing plan, is the cut and fill question, which relates to several other issues, but in general, I think you're satisfied with the bedrooms, you're satisfied with the basements, you know, tell me if I am wrong, but I think that the, the real issue comes down to the cut and fill on-site.
So, here's, here's something about that. I don't, I don't mean to stray, but I, you just don't know, as I often do, you don't know what is going to come out of this. I just have this vision in my mind of just a lot of dirt with no place to put it. Now, we're gonna probably be, you guys are gonna have a solution for that, but, you know, you begin to ask the question, well, if we had known in the beginning that this was going to be the consequence of this project, and we were going to have to put this much dirt somewhere, we might ask ourselves, well, is that really environmentally responsible? Do we really wanna be in the business of moving that much dirt around in this town? Is this the right thing to do? I mean, if they have to move it off-site, 20,000 yards is, is 1,000 trucks. So, and I know that's not environmentally responsible. So, it's, I'm not suggesting that we're going to necessarily come to the conclusion that we can't have basements, but I just don't think we have the information yet to know what the consequences of that might be.
Fair enough, fair enough. Again, just trying to check in to see if we've come anywhere near other than the, the demolition of the guest house. If there's anything else that we could, you know, kinda set aside. But, you know, we are charged with crafting a memo response for you to the town board, and if we could get ahead of that in any aspect, I'd really like to try and do that.
And I'd like to follow that up and, you know, support that, and I think that we have a means to do it, because I think your memo to the town board can be converted very easily into this referral memo. If we go through each of the items, on some of the ones that there is no dispute over, we can just say the board supports the proposed amendment. And as to the, there's two that are outstanding, we've talked about it, all the issues relating to the grading and the guest house, those have to be, still require additional work and all, but I think we could begin, at the end of tonight, I would hope we could go through, you know, like an overview of that memo and get board input as to what are the items we can kinda pass by and, and start crafting that memo as we go along. The other suggestion I would make is that it's still probably worthwhile to have them, if they can get it in before Thanksgiving, it's worthwhile to have them on the 3rd and can get some feedback at a minimum for what's been submitted, so I think we oughta just keep this.
Oh, yeah.
And then we will see if we need, you know, if we're not in a position on the 3rd to do anything, we'll have to ask for more time, but we will know until we get there.
Right. I think that's fair, don't you?
Mark Weingarten, on behalf of the counsel of the applicant, is exactly my point. We were just, we would ask to be kept on, we are gonna do what we can, even if in the way of a partial submission, to get something to you hopefully this week or early next week, so there's more time for review. We're chatting about it, obviously these things are coming at us very quickly, but we're gonna try and get you all of that information as quickly as possible. So, we would, we would appreciate if we could stay on there and try and get you all the information, time for you to review it for the 3rd, that's gonna be our goal.
So, you're referring to Sabrina's November 13th memo?
The 13th memo to the town board, yes. So, if we go through those items, if we can, whenever you're ready, we can go through those items.
Well, yeah, we could do that.
But just on the earlier notion of submittal, I think the big one is drainage and, sorry, the grading and phasing. And I know that we have holiday weeks coming up. It will be more useful if that material comes in soon enough, so that Bob can give a real review of this thing, 'cause this is highly technical stuff when it comes to these details, 'cause it's not just moving dirt around, the drainage and all those other things, so.
I'm not gonna be here, I won't be getting back till December 2nd.
See, that's what I'm.
Yeah, I mean, we are being forced to take our vacation, to be quite honest with you.
I have to take a vacation. I'm not gonna look at my vacation with my family. I'm not gonna be able to look at it, I won't be back till December 2nd. Sabrina, too, that's why we're both coming on back.
Yeah, I, I mean, and I would like to point out, it's not just the November 13th memo. I'm gonna go back to the November 4th memo to you, which really outlines all of the changes, the petition request, it's more detailed.
Yep.
The November 13th memo is really just an outline for the town board, the meat of the discussion lies within the November 4th memo to your board.
Do you have it, Les?
I have a copy. Do you wanna make, can we make copies, Felicia?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's two pages. Thank you.
I can make five copies.
You have one?
I've got one, yeah.
So, we just need.
We just need one for Les, anyone else need one?
And Tom?
I think I have one right here.
But I think we can.
One, Felicia.
Those are like sub, sub-issues as to some of these items, but there are, you broke up the petition in your November 13th.
Yes.
And with discreet pieces, and I think some of those pieces, we can just get through and pass them. Then we can turn to the subsections that are in your other memo, when we get to items that are still open.
Okay.
That's what I suggest.
All right, item one, I think the applicant has already addressed, they're going to provide a site plan to the town board, or as part of the petition.
Yes.
So, is ever, is the board okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Item two, the, the update of the environmental analysis. In addition to the narrative description, the applicant should provide additional graphic depiction of the use of the retained structure. And this is the guest house, and they have committed to doing that, so we can move on from that.
Number three is the first action item for the petition.
And number three is, it has to do with the bedrooms. The bedrooms that are in the Kupla building and the bedrooms within the town homes. And I can tell you, having been a part of the mad rush at the end of the year back in 2015, we did not adjust the language in the, in the finding statement that restricted the number of bedrooms when we, when the town board approved putting apartments, workforce, and market rate in that Kupla building. So, so I, so, so that request, I think, is more of correcting an oversight that had occurred previously.
Sabrina, that's, I don't know why, but I don't have that as my number three. Sabrina, that's, I don't know why, but I don't have that as my number three, I have number three as the note on the zoning table, the Vulcan Dimension Regulations, it should not apply to properties on which an existing building is adapted-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so you skipped the name.
I skipped one.
Yeah, so that's number three. That's just to allow the Kupla Building residential to be illegal use.
Correct, right now, right, the MFPD or the B R 20 zoning district.
Of course.
Okay, so that's okay, and I think we could just say the planning board supports that-
Yeah, I think we've said that a couple of times on these.
All right, so then let's move to the next one. So you started with number four.
This is the boundary, this is the boundary amendment of the Office Park Retail Overlay District, to align the existing parking layout to the south of the Kupla Building. And they said the boundary change is said to be in relation to the existing parking layout, I had requested that a map be provided demonstrating the parking layout.
Well, to be clear, again, maybe we're confused, the parking layout doesn't change?
It's the boundary line.
It's the line.
It's just the line that's moving to a, so nothing's changing in the parking, we're just changing the boundary line, so that it lines up with the way it's supposed to line up.
So it's in conformance.
That's it, and we have provided where the line goes, but, I mean, we can give you another picture of it if you'd like, but it's, it's, nothing's changing in the parking line, it's just, it's like a subdivision line, it's a line that's being drawn.
It's just an adjustment.
It's just an adjustment to make it legal conformance, that's it.
And we don't have a problem with this, right?
Support that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think my vision to just say planning board supports-
Yeah.
Number five is regarding a floor area change, a change to the regulations regarding floor area limitations. So the AFF, the affordable units were provided after the floor area section of the code was amended in 2015, there were limitations regarding the floor area for residential in the B R O 20, in the Office Park Retail Overlay District. The applicant is proposing language which states the maximum aggregate floor area in the Office Park Retail Overlay District shall not exceed 120,000 square feet, and the maximum occupied aggregate floor area in the non-overlay portion of the Office Park District for all uses other than AFFH model oriented units shall not exceed 500,000 square feet. This builds in the exception for the affordable units that we had asked them to do.
Right.
So, you support it?
Yep.
Good.
So Sabrina, could I suggest, let's take the easy route and jump to a number eight first, and then come back to six and seven, which are the harder ones.
Okay. Number eight, we need to allow the auditorium to remain within the multifamily plan development, so that would be an added use found within the zoning conformance, the attachments tables within the zoning code, so they are adding language that says item number four, publicly owned community facilities, as a permitted principal use, so that the activation of the auditorium as a public facility will be compliant with the zoning overlay.
Would that then apply to all MFPD districts?
Yeah, good question.
Yes.
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 Are there consequences of that, of changing that in the code, that would impact other possible developments in the future?
I think the limitation is if it's publicly owned.
Yeah.
As opposed to without publicly, then it would open the door further.
That's good, yeah, that's good restriction, publicly owned, to me, anyway.
Are you guys okay with that language?
I am.
I am.
Okay.
Now, we can return to six and seven, which are still-
Okay.
In twenty two.
So this, number six, I don't think is resolved yet. This has to do with the plan changes and accommodation of the boundary changes, and it also includes modification of the MFPD PDCP to accommodate planned modifications related to the length of driveways, the width of roadways, the alignment of the loop road, increases in the size of the dwelling units, and other related modifications of the East Village layout.
So this is basically one through nine, pretty much one through nine, the November 4th memo. So the question is, are there items that we have, the board has reached some agreement on, on those one through nine items? Not all of them, obviously, but some of them, or are they all, are you all waiting for the written word to be submitted? That's up to you. This is just tentative, anyway.
Right, and I have three bullets there regarding additional information. The first is, is remove the reference in the petition to demolition of the guest house, because we have already agreed that it will be preserved. The applicant should provide more information as to the change in size for each of the areas. The last communication regarding size was deducted from a May 13th, 2019 communication, the petition should be amended to include this information.
When you say areas, what do you mean by that?
The areas of, I don't know what I meant, the boundary areas, the different, into each of the groupings of the townhomes, there were changes in the size of the areas of the townhomes.
How many townhome groups do we have right now, currently proposed, Matt?
Not double E's, is that 31?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty.
And then the environmental analysis should include information pertaining to the area where units were expanded, and this gets to the lightest concerns about their location of their home and the expansion of those units. So this, the number six, I don't think you can say you can support the change at this point, that we're still waiting for more information to further your decision.
Number seven is the bedrooms. I think half of the bedrooms you probably can support, the ones that are already built.
Yes.
And then the rest is still open, I guess, unless you're ready to say that you support and don't support the second half.
I have no problem.
I have no problem with the second half.
Okay, so bedrooms is-
Bedrooms for both the MFPD and the B R O 20 are fine?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's supporting.
I think the one area that's left-
The only, the only one area in regarding the bedroom count, was the applicant talks to separately the number of kids, talks to only those, the number of children in the townhome development. I would really like to see the site as total-
Right.
-come out of this. You know, how many kids total, like looking at the Kupla Building, what is the average number of kids? I know that when we were speaking with the bus company, Matt, that they were very supportive of having to pick up more children so the bus would be full.
You can supply fake kids if you want, I mean, you know.
I mean, but I think it would be helpful to have a total kid count from the site.
And we can do that. And actually, in the summary table in the, early on in the document, it does include the 200 building, it includes the six that were projected for the 200 building, it adds that.
Is that true to what's in actuality, do you know?
No, I don't think we have the number that are actually in that building today.
I'm curious to see what that numbers is.
Right, we, I mean, we could ask the school district, I know that you helped us talk to the school district the first time around, if we could make that contact again.
Yeah. It would be helpful to know whether or not our estimates are correct, to be quite honest with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think it'll change our support.
No, I don't think it would change your support, but I think it's really good information to have, particularly since the number of schoolchildren keeps coming up in all of these-
Keeps coming to the town board.
Is the county next week to talk to the town board?
No, it would also be useful to have a break-
Isn't the school district coming next week to talk to the town board?
Yes, they are. I don't think that this is a concern, it's about a matter of documentation, we get asked this question a lot.
You know, because there's been a lot of concern about how many kids might end up at Grafflin, which seems to be the most heavily utilized elementary school, maybe with the Kupla Building, it doesn't matter, because there are so few kids, but it'd be kind of breakdown, how many are in elementary, how many are in middle school, how many are in high school?
Yeah, absolutely.
As time goes on.
Just to be clear, we can only get that information if it's given to us by, from the school district, otherwise we don't have it. So we can ask the question, but we'll supply it if it's given to us.
Right.
We'll see what we can do, I'll help you out.
Thank you.
All right, well, that goes to that.
I think we may-
Not bad.
Yeah, good, good deal.
So there's only one area that we're stuck with, which relates to the tables in my November 4th memo, so.
Right, good. Excellent. Any questions at all from the applicant?
Can you cancel Thanksgiving next week?
We're still on vacation, no matter what. So you guys mean forced to take them?
Yeah, there is.
Forced by taking no vacation for a year.
So use them or lose them?
Use them or lose them.
Resident for request to cancel holidays, two village managers, they've had requests to cancel Halloween a couple of times because of the weather.
That's in the public hearing on the cancellation issue.
Just want to make sure, we also have that reso tonight, right?
Yeah, we're going to get to that.
Yes, I think we're next.
So this is going to be, with your patience, this is going to be a rhetorical question about the prospect, for example, of moving all this dirt around, and potentially having to move it off-site, and the environmental impacts of all that, just the sheer size of this project. Sabrina, is there, I just wonder if there couldn't be, shouldn't be, for large site projects, a series of extra codes that we put in place that have to do with lead practices? I understand that when you have these individual homeowners and individual developers doing three or four sites at a time, how some of, some of these requirements can be onerous with respect to the cost and so on and so forth, but when you're dealing with a really big site, I wonder if it's possible and actually wise to sort of leverage the size of the project and the overall impact of the project by having an extra layer of requirements with respect to water and sewer and solar power and moving dirt around and, you know, all the things that are in that, in that, and I used to, I used to know it all, because I was a lead official way back when.
We do-
But is there, could we, could we put together something and get this in a town code, so that we can, you know, do some good work here?
There are building requirements for lead or similar type of applica, you know, green building applications in relation to building permits, so when toll actually comes in to construct the homes, they will have to meet certain levels of lead or green building standards, if you will.
But in addition-
The idea, I understand, but let me finish, the idea of a site approach-
There is, there is a whole lead chapters on this subject.
Yeah, yeah, we can look into that.
Tom, what I would say is that if this project came in today, environmental impact, the environmental impact statement would address that, it would be part of the environmental impact statement, remember, we're going back to 2011, it would be different then.
Okay.
So I think if we, if this project came in today, I would assume that the requirements for the environmental impact-
So with the state-
Would include lead issues.
So there's some protections at the state level, as a consequence, at the state level, because-
Well, it would, I think you could do that under the auspices of the environmental, you know-
We could just insert that.
Review Act, yeah.
Which is now part of the scoping that people ordinarily now-
Yeah, part of the scoping document.
They now use.
Lead analysis, yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to go back to the schoolchildren for a minute. Since we don't have any actual numbers, you know, the Kupla Building is so small, it won't really be a representative sampling, and we won't have actual numbers for the East Village, is it possible to get breakdowns for, say, three representative townhome developments, like Ledgewood Commons, which has been a basis of comparison, Old Farm Lake, which is a large development, and Riverwoods, which I think are larger townhomes than the other two? Just, just to get some points of comparison, and how, the number of schoolchildren, how they break down into the different grades.
Just to be helpful, Ledgewood is in the materials, that is part of the discussion.
Is it just a total number, or is it a breakdown by elementary, middle, and high school?
Again, what's in there is whatever we were given by the school district.
Well, listen, I think it's possible to put in a request to the school district for these developments and to break them down by school.
We certainly have no objection to it, but I'm just pointing out that this isn't in the environmental materials.
Yeah, no, the applicant has done their due diligence in comparing, but I think that we could add that to the request, it's a great suggestion.
Mm-hmm, good. Okay. So we have, Les?
The resolution on the extension of the-
TCO?
TCOs for the retail.
Mm-hmm.
Pretty straightforward, as the board tentatively voted a couple of weeks ago-
Right.
This extension to February 20th, it looks like it's not necessary, but it's necessary, but he pays, but-
So be it.
Because apparently there's, Bob has signed off on a memo today.
Well, we went out there, Bob and I, looked at it, we had three concerns, and they were all done, basically, they put in the module, I spoke, speaking to Dominic Messina with DOT, put in all the modules today, everything's working, they did all the striping, they put in the interface, we went over that with them, that the interface is required, so if the lights go out, town actually supplies generators, so they're operational. So those are the three main key points we were looking at, they've been completely satisfactorily completed, we wrote a memo, set that out today, and we're done, sign off on the intersection. So I wrote a memo where we have no objection for the building department to issue a TCO, for I believe Horizon and Compass.
So you need this just to cover the period that-
Before.
Yeah, so, but, so I would just say adopt it as proposed, and-
Okay. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Great. I think that's it, so is there a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.